Would you all please rise with the pledge of allegiance? Gentlemen and ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the May Board Meeting of the County Board of Edgar County. Appreciate you being here. I'd like to have the roll call now, Mr. Clerk.
Certainly.
Lorenzen.
Here.
Luddington.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
Chittick.
Here.
Farnum.
And Boyd.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We do have a quorum. Our thoughts are with Carl. He had some surgery here a little over a week ago, and he's on the mend, and we understand he's doing well, and we wish him well. So, he was gonna try to make it today, but I thought it was a little too soon, but he'll be here. Okay, next item on the agenda is the April 12th regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's a move.
Derek moves.
Second.
Andy seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented signify by saying aye or yes.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Claims against the county, you've received that and had that in your possession for a few days electronically, hard copy on Monday. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims as presented.
So moved.
Dan moves.
Second.
Derek seconds. Any further discussion? Assuming you're ready to vote, all those in favor of approving claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Were we in trouble? Did I say that wrong? All those opposed, nay?
You said it perfectly, Mr. Clerk.
All right. You guys need some coffee or anything? All right. How about this one? We'll try this one. How about county board member claims? Any questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
It's a move.
Derek moves.
Second.
Andy seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
It'll work.
All right. Now we come to the portion of the meeting where we invite public comment. You're allowed five minutes. Is there any public comment from the audience, please? Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda. I'd like to invite Joe or Larry, whoever wishes to come up. We have the presentation of the FY16 audit. So, Joe, we got the lectern set up there and have at us. But by the way, we have had the audit since the two study sessions ago. We've discussed it, so we're here to hear your deal on it, okay?
Well, in that case, I'm just gonna hit a few of the highlights and so forth. Overall, it went very well, and we didn't have any serious problems we were concerned about. And if you got your copy of the audit, if you'll turn to page one of eighty-two. The important thing there is the opinion on the bottom of that page, and it's a short, so I'll just quickly read it to you because this is the one that gives you the overall summary of everything. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective modified cash basis financial position of the governmental activities each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of Edgar County, Illinois as of November 30, 2016 and 2015. Their respective changes in modified cash basis financial statements for the years then ended in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting described in Note One." That summarizes it right there when you get to your clean opinion, because if we do have major concerns, we would have some type of qualifications in there and then point out the details to what those concerns were. I will comment because there is a tremendous amount of information in this type of report. We're not gonna go through this in great detail. I'm just gonna go through, hit some of the highlights. If someone has questions, you're welcome to ask myself or Larry or one of us. So, if I went through this in detail, we'd all be here the rest of the day, and I don't think any one of us wants to do that, so. I will comment. In our working with the county, we get very good cooperation from the county offices, and I'm very happy to see that because that's not always the case that we run into, but we do get good cooperation from all offices here, so we don't have any concerns from that standpoint. With that, I wanna just hit a few of the highlights. If you would go to page three, we've got some of the highlights of the financial highlights. The county's net position decreased by $550,000 or 2.6% for the year. Had disbursements of $11,979,000, which was a decrease of $359,000 from the previous year, and the revenues decreased from $11,643,000 to $11,429,000, which was 214,000, 1.8%. So, you had a decrease there in both of those. On page four, next page over, this gives a quick summary of the financial position of the governmental activities here, and you've got the comparison of the 2016 to the 2015, and you can see your current assets actually went up slightly, your capital assets went down slightly, and that's basically because of the depreciation of the net value in the capital assets. Your long-term outstanding debt has declined from $703,000 to $645,000, and your other liabilities declined a little bit also. So there you can see your change in your net position. Last year was $20,643,000; this year it's $20,92,000. So, a change there. A lot of the detail that brought that change about. On page five, in a quick overview here, your governmental activities, total revenues from one year to the next, you can see are very, very close, very consistent. The previous year was $11,643,000; this year it's $11,429,000. So there was a $214,000 change in revenues. You look at your disbursements, also a change there. The previous year was $12,389; this year was $11,979. So there was your decline there in your disbursements. So you can see that the net position, what that change has brought about during that period. The capital assets on the bottom of that page, here again, that's a slight change there from $17,219 to $16,206. Okay, on page eighteen, I was talking about the capital assets. I wanted to point out something. Your depreciation is determined by the estimated useful life, and we use a straight line. We do not use any type of accelerated depreciation here in the county. And the estimated useful lives are as follows. Your infrastructure, your roads, streets, and stuff like that, those are depreciated over fifty years. Your buildings and building improvements from a 55- to a 75-year period, and your machinery, furniture, and equipment is basically from five to fifteen years, depending upon those. But that's the general concept that we use to determine the depreciation. On page twenty-five, just a little more detail there as to your long-term debt. You'll notice there that the long-term debt was $153,100 on the debt service. It is now $145,700, so you had a retirement there of $7,400 in your long-term, or your debt service, and your general obligation bonds decreased from $550,000 to $500,000. So there was a $50,000 decline there. There, it shows, from the planning standpoint, the bottom schedule there shows the schedule for debt retirement over the next few years through 2030. So you can see what the, what type of interest and principal you're gonna be paying for debt retirement during that period there, and that comes up to your total of $916,000 of the, which will be your principal and interest payments up through 2030. So it goes out quite a ways.
Sorry, Joe, what page is that on?
That was on page twenty-five. On page thirty-eight, just hitting a little more of the detail, the highlights of some of the detail here. This shows in the general fund your original and final budget and total revenues anticipating $4,190,000, actually received $3,651,000. So you were $538,000 short on what you had anticipated on the budget, and that compare, you can see the comparison there with the 2015. When you get into the disbursements, you've got somewhat the same situation there. You anticipated or budgeted in the general control, and you can see the individual offices and so forth in there. $2219,000, actually spent $1,525,000, so you had a favorable variance there of $693,000. So that part of it, you offset the unfavorable variance up there in the revenues by more than what was there. So overall, it was a better picture. Then going, without going through all the detail, you can see we got that same type of information down there, public safety corrections, judiciary, and court, and so forth. So, there's a lot of detail in here, and that's why I say we could spend the entire day in here if we started going through all that detail. So, that's the reason I'm just trying to hit some of the highlights. Okay, on page forty-four, you have your taxes, your intergovernmental, and your charges for services and so forth. It shows what your actuals were compared to your budget, and you can see there that you've taken that taxes, actually budgeted $2,371,000, actual ended up $2,236,000, so there was only a $134,000 variance on there. And you get into some of your intergovernmental, you can see the variance there of $29,000 in charges for services of $42,000. So, for the most part, you take an operation of this size, those are running pretty close, pretty consistent. And what that's really indicating, you're doing a reasonably good job of planning and a reasonably good job of following up and getting, meeting your objectives on your planning and so forth. And I'm happy to say that because we don't always get to make those type of comments. From that standpoint, everything looks very good. I won't take the time to go through, but on page sixty-one and page sixty-seven, that's a little more detail of some of the other offices. The one page that I will go to here is page seventy-five, and this is your tax settlements because everyone's always concerned about taxes and what's happening there and where you stand. So if you look at that, your total assessed valuation in the 2015, and that was the last assessed valuation that went into this report, was $318,965,000, and that was compared to $299,000 the prior year. So your total assessed valuation in the county did go up slightly, almost, what, $20 million? The, in your general corporate fund, you can look and see what your rates have been. Your rates have been fairly consistent. If you look back in 2012, it was 27 cents, and this past year in 2015, on the last tax year in here, that was only 25. So it's fairly consistent there. And if you look at those, those are basically the case. Your county highway funds, your tax rate .09, and current year .09. Federal aid matching funds, .04, .04, just looking from twelve to fifteen and so forth. So, overall, you've been holding your taxes fairly, fairly well there. You're just not seeing any wide fluctuations, and one of the things that has helped from that standpoint is the change there of the actual county assessed value, which has gone up. So that's helped from the tax standpoint, without any increase in your rates significantly. So that's just really kind of hitting the highlights that I wanted to give, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Gentlemen, questions? Don?
Could we make one in on the SEFA that we're not, we didn't, there's a new threshold on the SEFA, right?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. The thing of it is, you, because of the change in the requirements on some of those, you're not, you were not required to have that extra information in there this year. So it's, that's something that they changed periodically.
And what is the new threshold, $750,000?
Seven hundred and fifty, yeah.
For federal grants and stuff?
Right.
As an aggregate throughout the county, right?
Yes, correct, yes. Well, $500,000.
So now we don't meet that threshold, so that has to be included. This year, right?
Yeah. You weren't that far off.
Oh, we were close, but no.
Well, I mean, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't like nickel and dime, but yeah, I mean, it's not like, it's not possible to come back.
Okay, 'cause we do have a lot of agencies that will email us, different people, saying they wanna get a copy of our audit because they're seeking to look at the numbers for this kind of stuff. And there's, there's just no SEFA, so everybody make note of this.
Just tell them that.
There is a reason.
Yeah, you just did not hit the criteria that required it this year. The one thing they did do is they, they cut that out, you didn't have to do that, but they've added a lot of pension disclosures and so forth, and I don't know how many. We got many, many pages of additional information. That's a new requirement that came through this year, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. When, historically, and I lose track every year, when are these audits due into the state?
At the end of the month.
That's what I thought.
Hundred and eighty days, if you wanna be specific.
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure. We're probably gonna have to have a special meeting before our next study session to approve this, okay?
Okay.
You know, not to be technical, but we haven't got it, I didn't get it quite worded correctly on the agenda. So, in order to do it correctly, we will, we will pass it and get.
Let us know, and we'll make sure that gets.
Right, I just wanted to be clear, and stuff happens, so we'll get it taken care of, okay?
Very good.
You've got everything you need to submit that, right? You've got everything you need to submit that?
All I need is to go ahead.
Well, we need the signatures on a couple of documents, and we'll get, we'll get those to you, okay?
Okay, appreciate it.
We appreciate your taking care of us as far as the audit and our association over the last few years, so.
As I say, it's, I appreciate the cooperation you get in this area. That helps, makes a big difference.
I have a quick question, just my own curiosity. You're on the board, and how long have you guys done the audit for the county? How many years now?
Two or three.
Yeah, something like that.
We had another firm that no longer exists prior to that.
Right.
I was just curious how long you've standing and been going on, so. Glad you heard us working on it.
It is, it is.
Joe, Larry, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it, and we appreciate the cooperation that you got from all the departments and the elected officials and the work you've done.
We certainly appreciate that.
All right. Okay, moving on to the agenda, we're gonna go with the Highway Department, resolution authorizing the county board chairman to sign intergovernmental agreement with Kansas Community Unit School District Number Three. These first two motions would actually give us all of the school districts an intergovernmental agreement, and then by having those agreements, when the school districts request or need assistance, we've already taken care of the criteria on which we will operate, and so we're hoping that, do you have anything more to say about that? But with the passage of these first two resolutions, we'll have an agreement with all of the school districts in the county. Do you guys have any questions before we have a motion? Assuming not, a motion to approve this resolution, please, with Kansas?
So moved.
John, and then Andy seconds. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk? Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Chittick.
Yes.
It does pass, thank you. Next resolution is an intergovernmental agreement with the Edgar County Unit School District Number Six. Same criteria, same situation. So I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Dan moves.
Second.
Derek seconds. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk? Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
And Chittick.
Yes.
It does pass, thank you, gentlemen. Number three, resolution of support to apply for FY19 Highway Safety Improvement Program funding for countywide striping. We discussed this Monday morning, but do you have any further comments or?
Three or $400,000 to strip the whole county. The FY17 solicitation.
Five dollars fine.
Hey, man.
Wanna get that one?
I gotta.
Who is it? What do you want?
I'm turning it off. The best guy, I'm sure they want me to go somewhere besides hell. Emotional sickness, I think.
We're all fine.
Do you need me to hurry up?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, that's all you did.
Okay, never mind. Let's get back to, are there any further discussion of the FY19 highway?
Yeah, money left over from FY17, they didn't spend it all, so the FY19 solicitation's very large, and they wanted not only to solicit candidates, but select them quickly. So we're putting, we're asking the board if they support putting in two candidate projects. The first one's for striping, safety-related, obviously, and then the second will be for guardrail upgrades on the county system, major collectors and above.
Motion to approve the safety program for striping.
So moved.
Derek moves.
Second.
Dan seconds. Any further questions or discussion? Assuming not, Mr. Clerk? Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
And Chittick.
Yes.
And it does carry. Resolution of support to apply for FY19 Highway Safety Improvement Program funding for countywide upgrade of guardrail slash in terminals, which was just described to you. Any further discussion? Entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Andy moves. John seconds. Mr. Clerk? Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
And Chittick.
Yes.
Okay, next we have a report of public hearing and to authorize the chairman to apply for USDA grant for sheriff's department vehicle. Twenty, or fifteen minutes before the start of this meeting, we had a public hearing to garner public comment on this grant application, which is required by the USDA. We had no comments. We took roll, we took a list of people that attended, and this is one of the last things we need to do before we turn in our application. We're looking at $56,000 worth of purchase for police cars. The grant would provide $25,000 of that, those funds. So, any other questions about the public hearing or what we're doing for the sheriff's department? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Derek moves. Andy seconds. Why don't we call the roll just in case we need to have an official? Mr. Clerk? Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
And Chittick.
Yes.
I would like to, do you have any comments, or would you like to introduce yourself to the board? This is our grant writer.
Hello, Kevin McCurnellson from Regional Planning, Charles, Postman Regional Planning. We cover the Seven County area, and we're helping with you with this grant, so if you have any questions, just let us know. Thank you.
We very much appreciate it, Kevin, and we had a meeting with USDA, what, two weeks ago or two and a half weeks ago, whenever it was, and so we appreciate the assistance and the help we're getting from you. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, the USDA, the tie-in there is for a rural community, and there's county law enforcement, how does that tie in? This is what they call the community facilities grant. It's normally used for squad cars, but it can be used for other things as well. There are other villages, normally, you just powdries get this. It's smaller communities, rural counties, how that ties in, part of higher culture. It's to pay, they, they do determinations, see what percentage, so you're around 50% as far as how much they cover, so.
Anyway, thank you, Kevin. Any further? Okay, we'll move along to the resolution to reappoint M. Scott Ingram, trustee of Paris Community Fire Protection District of Edgar County. Can I have a motion of approval of this resolution, please?
So moved.
Derek moves. Dan seconds. Further discussion? Mr. Clerk? Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Chittick.
Yes.
It is moved, or it is approved. Next item, number twelve, is a resolution to accept oath of office and bond of Scott Mil, uh, Scott Ingram, Paris, trustee of Paris Community Fire Protection District, Edgar County, Illinois. Motion?
So moved.
Derek?
Second.
John, seconds. Assume you're ready to vote. Mr. Clerk? Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Don't confuse us.
You're too old to have that stuff, though. Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Chittick.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Next is a motion to approve assignment of sales tax certificate, sales tax, tax sale certificate of 150096 from Joseph E. Meyer, a tax agent for our county, to Jackie L. Sweeney. We've discussed that, we had the attorneys check out that, and everything is appropriate, so I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I have a question of Don first, if you don't mind.
No.
Is this going to be our policy going forward? I mean, are we going to start?
From what I understand, I've been treasurer ten years, and this always was an option.
Right.
It just never surfaced in our county, but it has happened in other counties, and they, this tax agent that we have is a tax agent for many counties in Illinois. It's just the first time that it happened in this way for our county, and we just wanted to make sure that we all understood it, and it has always been an option for this tax agent to do this, and they've got their own attorneys and everything, so we're gonna rely on them to use their expertise on this and do what's best for the county and the taxpayers.
So you're comfortable with trusting it? 'Cause I mean, I know unwritten policy may be a harsh word, but if we've never done it before and this is the first, it's probably not gonna be the last.
Well, I think our policy is we have a contract with this tax agent to manage our delinquent properties, and that kind of, that's a big, big statement, but I think at this point in time, I think we've reviewed it enough where we just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page. In the future, that doesn't mean we can't change our mind about it, where we question the agent on this, but this does kind of get us all on the same page, and we might see more of this happening. I don't know.
Can you tell us what happened?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, eliminate or, what happened?
What happened, what do you mean, John?
How's this different than what's normal with regular tax and purchase? I'm getting the impression somebody is doing an installment program. So that's why, how is this different? You're sitting here telling people it's different, what's different?
It's different in that the, Joseph Meyer is just getting rid of the property before the issue of tax deed. So, but behind the scenes, we don't know what is that reason. Is that correct, Donald?
Right, we, the, what we have seen in the past is when a delinquent property falls into the lap of the tax agent at a tax sale, when no other tax sale buyer bids on it, it defaults to the tax agent, and then they go through the two- to three-year process of managing it to the point where they will petition for deed so that the county as trustee has ownership of it, as trustee, not the county owns it as trustee, meaning basically.
I did that with one a few years ago.
Okay, now.
They're reassigning it.
They're reassign, they've only, they, the tax.
It's just simply.
Before they, before they get the deed, they're just reassigning.
Right, and they still have to.
Similar to, if I was to go up and pay three years' worth of back taxes on something, it'd be.
But they still have to wait the period of time, same period of time, all the rules still apply. It's just that our tax agent is no longer responsible for that particular piece of property. This person is, or company is now, okay?
Somebody wants the property, so.
Right. That makes sense.
All right. Does, did that answer your question, Dan?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of explain why it's different from what we have been doing.
That's fine, I appreciate that, thank you.
Those people understand what we're doing.
Cool.
Okay.
Is everybody, okay? All right, we need a motion for the approval of this assignment.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Andy, and then Dan. And let's have a roll call on this one, please.
Certainly. Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
And Chittick.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved, thank you, gentlemen. Can I ask Andy to check the hallway, please?
Take what's bone with you.
Okay, next we have a resolution to renew special events liquor license to Robert Morgan, doing business as Castle Finn, oh, vineyard, vineyard and winery. Can I have a motion for approval? Derek moves.
Second.
Dan seconds. Any questions? Okay, would you please call the roll?
Lorenzen.
Yes.
Luddington.
Yes.
Patrick. Brunner.
Yes.
And Chittick.
Yes.
Okay. Would somebody let him know that we're no longer need him to check the hallway? Just in case you're wondering, it's prescribed state law to not have him present in any issues dealing with liquor licenses. Okay. Number 15, we are not, those and the clerks, and some of the things that we have to do housekeeping-wise is not due to be done until the June meeting, so we'll skip 15 and 16, and we'll move on to the officer department head reports. Donald?
Nothing spectacular to report, other than glad to hear that the audit went fine, because a lot of the information they get through our software and everything that we maintain, and glad to hear that. You will notice there, towards the bottom of that current balance column there, about two-thirds down where it says less levy funds and deficit, remember, we are, we are covering the deficit in the IMRF fund because we chose to pay off a shortfall in IMRF, because it was underfunded, and right now we are covering $100,000 of that. We knew this was going to happen, but this is better than paying the 7% like we would have had to pay, we saved $14,000 instantly several months ago. The other $17,000 roughly is because some bills went out for the GOB debt certificate area this, this board meeting, and there was not sufficient amount in that improvement fund. So I went ahead and took the whole amount, and the county fund is covering that right now, instead of doing a, doing a bunch of journal entries and for a partial whatever, because we still have to maintain a $5,000 minimum balance in that account to not get fees. So instead of me rambling on anymore about it, I just made a logical decision to let it cover the full $17,000 amount. When we see more money come in there, I will do the accounts receivable, accounts payable transactions, and it'll, it'll take care of itself. So right now, the general fund has about $17,000 due to it from the courthouse improvement fund, and that takes care of that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Is there any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
If you'll notice, a year ago, there's a fairly wide discrepancy. Part of that is we are in fact experiencing some slowdown in income from the state of Illinois. Okay? Some of it's infighting, political, whatever, but we have some areas where we are down on our collection. You can take a look at the budget that I gave you, and it'll show you specifically. We're at 50% of the year, and you'll notice that if you look at the budget and where we're at on the budget, you'll see on the income side where we are down on our collections.
About half a million dollars.
Right, so I believe we'll still get it at some point, but I've talked to the people that I need to talk to, and hopefully some resolution will come about. And obviously, or not obviously, but there are certain things that we haven't received that we would normally receive this month, so, and we have had no problems with those, but it's hit or miss when we, you can't say we're going to have everything by the 10th of the month, or the 8th of the month, or the 20th of the month, it varies, so. We shouldn't have to borrow until we've got payables next month.
Right, I, I would not, I'm not going to.
We can't here and tee it, no.
Yeah, I would say that since there'll be a payroll and an accounts payable hitting about the same time, first part of next month, I'll probably have to dip into that line of credit. But right now, we have it, we've still got the full $500,000 available.
Yes, Dan.
On the subtotal general fees and funds, last year at this time, it was $436,000, this year $72,000.
That's why it was, yeah.
So we're not getting the money, or should we be getting?
Right. Our expenditures are not out of line, it's just that.
Just not getting the money.
Right. I mean, there's a hundred here and a hundred there, first thing you know, you're talking real money. That's an error, never mind. Okay, Dan, or Don, thank you. Do you have anything to add, Aaron? Hi Janet.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm, I'm here.
Do you have anything for us?
Not much, like you were saying, we've been hit pretty hard with the malice smoothing state funds. Been a pretty tight couple of months for us, we're getting a little bit more back on track now. I was going to mention that I did have the fire department at the health department yesterday morning, in case anyone wondered about it. We had a compressor pump go bad in our boiler room, and it filled with smoke, and so I did evacuate the building, and the fire department came, and they went down and gave the all clear, and I've just got, I've had signalers coming out, and there are maintenance people, so they, they are in the process of making repairs.
Was that one of Dan's new motors that he got you, or?
We found a used one.
Cutting corners.
Trying to save money.
Everybody's okay, everything's fixed.
We evacuated, as soon as I saw the, opened the door and saw the smoke, I went ahead and evacuated, and, you know, there were no flames or anything, but it was definitely full of smoke, and the building definitely smelled like smoke.
True. Glad everything was okay. Angie? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just asked if it'd be covered under insurance.
Wow.
I, I don't think.
It might, okay.
It's a $5,000 deductible, so I wouldn't count. Angie?
I don't have a lot, just, we're in the testing phase of our e-file, Illinois. We submitted our, our fees for our civil cases, and they've inputted them, and we're going in now and creating like fictitious cases and checking all of our fees to make sure they've got them in right and that sort of thing, but we're just, we're just working on that currently, that's all I have.
Okay. Dina?
Aerial Flight Project is 65% complete, so it's going smoothly. I wish I could say the same about the Paris Township reassessment, weather has been rough, but I will make you aware, they will see us, I think we scare people sometimes, but we do work evenings, we work Saturdays, we work Sundays, we work holidays, whenever the assessor is available to go, we're out there, so we're buggering on.
That's the quadrennial?
Yes.
Okay. I thought so, but I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Any questions, Angie? Monty? How you doing, bud?
I'm doing good, I guess. Information's moving right along, except for maybe the funds aren't flowing quite the way they should, but.
Really?
Oh, we weren't going to say anything, Monty.
No, it was already mentioned, so I have nothing new there. I do have a meeting with the several circuits tomorrow with administrative office, but it's, the funds have been allotted, it's just waiting for the state controller to release them, but the funds were allotted back in August of last of 16. They just haven't been released for some reason, and it's not Edgar County, it's every county in the state. Obviously, all sent for affirmation, or court services have been released to any county, including Cook, so you know, across the state, so they're not picking on us.
Would a ticket with a nice big sign help with you in Springfield?
I thought about calling the governor and making an appointment, but apparently I'm not important enough to get in for a one-on-one. That's about it, if I find out something, I will be sure to pass it on.
Yeah, I did ask Monty, Don, to let you know Friday what, if anything, he heard, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, so we're just busy planning our exercise, it's May 25th, at 10, it'll be at Esza and Edgar County Airport. Other than that, we're just kind of dealing with some paperwork from the state from last week's weather, and all the flooding and road closures and all that kind of stuff, so.
Question or comment? We, we did get an indication from DOT that it may be, has there been a declaration?
Not yet, but we got the same thing.
What you, what do you anticipate?
I don't know, I haven't heard anything.
Tom? How are you?
I'm fine, we have acclimated Esza with the airport recently.
I got a tour, I'm excited.
So we're preparing, and we're mowing a lot of grass.
Tom, what's the status of the tea hanger leases? How percent are we on that?
I think we're waiting on like three more to come back.
Okay.
Good shape.
Have they told you? Have they told you? Have they told the leases are out?
We have 17 tea hangers are all leased.
Okay. I didn't mean to leave you out, Mary Lou. Wanted to tell you how much, well, you're always here, so it's almost like I should, but the fence out at the fairgrounds just looks wonderful. I mean, that's just, really sets that off, and you must be very proud of it, you and your, you and your crew, so.
We are, we're accepting all donations.
Okay, all right. I see, aren't you glad you got a little plug in there? Anyway, thank you for coming to the meetings, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on, did I, oh, yes, Augie. What, who did I miss? Oh, Sheriff.
Sheriff.
How could I forget you, Sheriff?
I worked out a while.
All right. Sheriff!
Everything's quiet, summer's here, numbers are moving back up again, we kind of got spoiled with the, down into the teens for a little bit, so we enjoyed it while we could. I just also want to say thanks to everybody that's helped on this USDA grant, I know it makes you want to pull your hair out sometimes. I want to thank Kevin for all he's done. If I've got any leftover, I'll maybe send Mary Lou a little bit for that finish.
Ooh, better hope you, hope you don't get audited. Thanks, Jeff. Any questions of the sheriff? All right, Augie?
We have, well, we are in the process of sending out our certification letters for our levies, so we've got, Terry's done an excellent job working with that. We've got a new program, you, obviously you've heard us talk about CIC, and that is the same program that the assessor, the treasurer, the clerk uses, different parts of that. There's, there's a learning curve, but we're getting through that, and after all of the the levies are entered in, and it gets calculated, then we send out a certification letter to the various municipalities and agencies, and once we get that back, and we think, well, in theory, when we get that back, then that's the way the taxes are going to go. And when, when we get them all done and we're comfortable, then we'll send it over to Don. Did I miss anything on that? Yeah, we're, we're not done completely, obviously, we've got drainage ditches to do, which, that's a different character all by itself. The other thing, Angie mentioned e-file, and my office on the recording side is going to start, we're going to implement what's called MyDeck, and basically, when there's a real estate transaction, that involves money, and you have to buy stamps, revenue stamps, and probably seen them on deeds where you lick them and you stick them and you, you know, get it all wallpapered up, well, we're going to do that all electronically in a few months. So we're laying the groundwork for that, we're excited about that. And then eventually, recording is going to go electronic, and I'm not going to say too much about that, but we're looking at next year implementing that.
Okay.
Questions? We good? Thank you.
Moving on. Many reports? Dan, do you have anything for us this morning?
I don't know, I'm just trying to process getting all the cameras working out, the humble shelter and stuff. We have one camera, I don't know if it got hooked up, but I'll check, we'll find out. Other than that, no.
Andy?
Just one, I guess note, I, I had mentioned on Monday that I had contacted the elevator company, elevator at the courthouse, because Bob had mentioned to me that on some of the inspections, at some point he said we, the company that inspects said we're going to have to redo some of the things on the elevator, and I did have a guy get back with me, not, not the person I need to talk to about costs of things, but he did say that that elevator's, that there's no replacement parts available for that elevator if something goes out. They, they no longer make anything for that.
He didn't use the word death trap.
No. He said as long as it passes inspections, we think, we're fine, but if something goes out, there's nothing available for that elevator, basically. So I've been waiting for about two weeks, I'm going to contact him again. Throw the ball in someone's court, and they don't get back with you, you kind of forget about it sometimes, but I'll, I'll try to get back with him. I have no idea what kind of costs, you know, what, what costs are involved with it, but at some point, it's just something we need to keep in mind, we're going to spend some money on the elevator at some point, so. Going to be, need to be the bearer of bad news, but seems like everything they check on is like, well, they don't, they don't make that anymore.
So use the stairs is what you're saying? So use the stairs is what you're saying? Save the wear and tear.
Yeah, save the wear and tear on the elevator, be easy on it, yeah. Stairs are, stairs are good for you anyway. So, other than that, that's probably enough of a bomb.
Ludd?
There's probably enough of a bomb to drop today, so.
John? Derek?
Joe Shiner contacted me after their meeting the other day, and said they're shooting for June 17th to be an airport awareness day, and they have a bunch of stuff, so I think free, free meal if you fill up your plane. Stand by one, I'll give you the full, full meal deal.
What about your car?
Do I have to go out and buy a plane, is that?
Yes, it's worth, totally worth it, the food's going to be great. And our hopes are to have a flying and provide free food with fuel purchase and other activities. This time, we were targeting a car show to show off our sweet new parking lot, and perhaps some military aircraft, he's mentioned a Blackhawk to me, as well as having a Rusty Pilot Program that morning. So whoever graduates the Rusty Pilot Program with the top score gets to fly the Blackhawk. I made that up.
So what part of your report is true and what's not?
It's up for you to decide. June 17th, check it out.
June 17th, okay. Mark that on your calendar.
Yes, for everybody.
Get your planes cranked up. Okay, I pretty much talked to you about the budget. Derek, I want to remind you and Andy that we have a, a meeting with the negotiating team from the dispatchers and jailers at 10:30, so that's the next item on the agenda. Do you have any questions of me, gentlemen? Okay? We have nothing as far as the, a closed session. Augie talked through the state's attorney, and he had nothing for us. We will have a closed session at the June meeting in order to deal with the minutes from the closed sessions to determine whether we're going to open them up or keep them closed. So that would be, unless the state's attorney has need to come in to a study session between now and then, that's where we sit on that. I want to remind you that the Kreckman bill, bidding, bids are due on the 31st of May, May, so we may or may not, we'll talk about this, determine whether we want to have a